Hope you ever want to play reading.
Hi, Terry, you wanna test your mic?
Uh, does it work? Can you hear me?
Yeah. How you feeling?
Uh, much better today, uh, but I, um, talked with the doctor's office and I'm in quarantine till Saturday. And then I have to wear a mask for five more days after that.
Halloween is not over.
Well, everybody knows to not visit you now because you're public, okay? Just so you know, you're public. I'm sure we just violated some kind of rules. Knowing that Terry's in quarantine.
Hey, I spared Brenda on Monday. I asked her to do the time sheets cuz I just was not feeling good.
Don't come, don't come in, yeah. And Anna showed up and she brought the floor off, wiped all of us down.
I've been using hand sanitizer.
Probably twenty minutes away.
I have my hand sanitizer.
At least, so we'll get started and then if we need a motion, if he's not here, then we'll probably entertain a motion to amend the agenda.
That'd be good.
Okay?
Yeah. If these folks are.
Yep.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Village of Lannan Joint Plan Commission Village Board Meeting to order from Wednesday, January twenty ninth, twenty twenty five at six oh three P M. If please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's part of every meeting, I'll say it since there's. All right, uh, roll call for Plan Commission. Grim.
Here.
Newman.
Here.
Janice is absent. Lake.
Here.
Pay Lightner.
Here.
Lavold is also absent and Yates is present. Village Board, Lake.
Here.
Calatola Roby.
Here.
Newman.
Here.
Yates. Is here. Uh, Moore is, I'm not sure where. Tina is, uh, maybe she thought six thirty two, um, Rainier here.
Here.
And Summers.
Yes, sir.
Statement of public notice.
Has been posted.
Thank you. Um, so our attorney is not here yet. He thought six thirty, so we're gonna go ahead and get started here. And we'll see, uh, see where we're at. Uh, item number five, discussion of possible action for approval of plan of operation for Chemright Copac LLC at one nine seven two five Edgewood Drive line in Wisconsin, five three oh four six, which includes three separate lots to be utilized by the applicant. Um. So this is one of three that we'll be looking at, so make sure you've got the right one. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, you folks kinda modeled this after the existing one, correct? So.
Correct.
I have, uh, actually basically one item that I'm questioning on, on all three. Zero handicap spots at all three locations?
It's true. Sorry.
I think they're, I'm not sure. But there have to be handicap spots on all of your properties.
Yeah, or at least the manufacturing facility where presumably you sometimes have people from the public or outside the company in the building, um. The other ones are storage primarily, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I would say on the, the manufacturing facility, perhaps one consideration, I'm certainly not an ADA expert, is it's not, it's a very contained area, obviously, because it's gotta be incredibly sterile, given the products that we make, so entry into our manufacturing is, of course, very strictly, uh, contained. And so you don't get public coming in.
Right.
No, certainly doesn't mean that you wouldn't maybe have an employee who would qualify for a handicap spot, or a customer, for example, but.
Or a supplier.
Yeah, but I think ADA generally applies when it's a public access and this is not a public access.
If I may comment, according to the ADA, a manufacturing facility with parking available to the public must provide a designated number of accessible parking spaces, including both standard accessible spaces, at least eight feet wide, and van accessible spaces, with each space having a five foot wide access aisle, all clearly marked, blah, blah, blah. The amount depends on the total number of parking spots in the lot, typically ranging from two to five percent, so even, uh, manufacturing, um, is not exempt from ADA regulations.
If you have public parking, if you have public parking there.
What I'm questioning is, is your office space.
Yeah.
The building that has offices, that would probably have a visitor to, somebody to the office, that's what we're talking about, not where they're actually making the product.
Yeah.
The office space, that's why I'm questioning on all three, they said zero. I thought maybe it was they typed over, typed over, just forgot to change the one. Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think we have discretion to allow for fewer.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah. May I speak?
Yeah.
So our main facility, obviously, our office is attached to the manufacturing facility, as you saw, very, very, very small.
Yeah.
Parking lot, um, total of I think it's six parking spaces as it is. There's only six spots.
I had to park across the street.
Little shut off!
Have you?
Yeah, whatever.
That's not Terry, that is, uh, someone else. I muted them.
To, to be fair, we're happy to follow up on the issue and and make sure that we understand what, what's required.
Yeah, I think.
Of course, if it's required, we'll make it happen.
I think we can probably move this forward. Yeah, some sort of conditional stipulation or whatever.
After review.
I think they can get with that on that and.
All you have to do is take one spot.
Yeah.
There is a sign.
Uh, there also is some type of grandfathering.
But if the place, the place gets sold, it's gonna have one to the new owner.
That's possible. Yeah, yeah. Well, it's gonna be just a new tenant right now, but.
Yeah, it's, it's still grandfathered.
I would, I would just say probably have Ben or building and.
Yeah, it'd be a review of the ordinance and then apply, apply them to the case.
Yep.
Yeah, and there might even be a requirement that says that if you have less than so many spots, you might be exempt from it as well. I mean, if they only have six spots and they need two percent.
Yeah.
Um, what percentage of a parking spot does that apply to?
Some motorcycle parking.
You get one third of a ADA spot, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
On the motion or? Any more discussion?
Uh, did anybody else have any other comments on this application?
You can stretch her down on the end there. Okay. I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the plan of operation for Chemright Copac at one nine seven two five Edgewood Drive, which includes three separate lots.
Oh, second. We have a motion, a second, um.
Second it?
Done it.
He's not on the plan commission.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Right.
All right, well, I will, I will second then.
We have a couple of seconds. Uh, any other discussion? Do we want to, um, have any comment about having this reviewed for the parking spaces, or are we?
For me, it's so insignificant.
The, uh, the one thing I'm surprised at Benny here. I, I would think Ben would have looked for on, uh, I wouldn't mention what he has to say, but they did provide sort of the landscape plan, but we really don't see the parking lot plans around the buildings. It's, uh, I think what, what Ben would have called that actual uh, layouts, uh.
Like a site plan?
Site plan, there you go. That's the word I'm looking for. I, I see they have plot surveys and stuff like that, but they don't really have the site plans included with these files. Which could be a, just something that they need to supply, you know, within, you know, sixty or ninety days or something like that, to be put in the file.
So I think that really, I mean, this would be the closest you would have to that, I think, was metal insert. Um.
So you're saying without.
The survey, the plat of survey, but it does not, to your point, have any.
You don't really see.
Lot markings, um, on here, and you can see where the lot is, but it just doesn't have any of the markings or anything.
I mean, it's a requirement for all the businesses.
Been here forever.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have a set landscape plan, like for both warehouses, just so you know, which would be considered a site plan that would maybe the landscaper would have laid it out cuz we have no landscaping, so I could, you know, take pictures or hand draw or something like that, if you need that set plan for where our parking is. But I believe for the main facility, there is, it's marked out where the park, it's a very small parking spot in front of the building. It's just maybe for our warehouse, it's not.
And like, it's all existing, you know, it's not a new product or anything.
It's, it, we're putting it on file, we're, this is, this is, we're cleaning up the plan, the plan of operations, what we're doing. I'm just saying is, it, you could, you could check with engineering. Uh, it is requested in other locations.
Well, we do have a motion and a second, um. You know, I don't, I don't know that the applicant's necessarily opposed to providing an updated survey with the stripe indicated on there, right?
We're happy to do that.
You, you've been very accommodating um, with, from numerous aspects throughout the process here, so I don't anticipate any lack of co-operation there, but maybe we can just be on record as requesting that we get some of those additional details, um, for the clerk, just to have on file with the submission, might that satisfy you, cuz I'm sure Ben would have had that in his notes. I, I would think so too, and I, I actually am a little surprised he didn't. I think we got so focused and caught up on a lot of the mechanics and stuff with the conditional use permit that he probably is running a little short on time.
Yeah, the good part is, is, I mean, they, 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 Chemright did a nice job of turning it around and, and getting it here to us, you know, in amongst time for updating the, the plan of operations.
Yep.
Uh, do we need to amend that motion then to include, um, verbiage that just says, uh, additional request for, um, pavement marking for record keeping?
If, if the motion maker is inclined to do so.
I don't see any reason for it, yeah.
Okay. Motion stand, and second stance then.
Okay, any other comments? From the planning commission? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries to approve the plan of operation for Chemright Copac and just list the one. See. Property, do we have other ones for the other two? No.
No, just listen.
Well, all goes together.
Yeah, we.
Adam number six, uh, public hearing for Chemright Copac LLC for a conditional use permit to keep a well for production at one nine seven two five West Edgewood Drive line in Wisconsin, five three oh four six, or more specifically on the lot where the private well has been established. Um, so I would, uh, at this time, I will open the public hearing. George?
You're it.
You're the public tonight. You got any comments? No, any objections? Jeff, how about you? Young lady?
No.
Good answer.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion to close the.
And a second.
And a second. Uh, any other discussion for the public hearing? Do we have any comments or anything from any of the remote viewers?
Terry, you good?
I am good, thank you.
Hey, good. All right, uh, all those in favor to close the public hearing?
Aye.
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 You opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed. Um, you wanna jump out? Yeah, um, do you mind somebody making that motion? Mike, you want to?
A motion that you move up number nine at this time?
So we have a motion to amend the agenda and move item number nine up to item number seven. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
We have a second. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, um, we're just gonna do that until, oh, well, there he is. All right. Um, well, I think we can probably get this other item taken care of fairly quickly. We'll get them on their way and then we can delve into yours, which is, I'm assuming they take a little more consideration.
Number nine is the, uh, village board thing.
Oh, yeah.
Give me an eleven.
That'd be a quick one, yeah.
Yeah, number nine, any quicker?
Item number nine is, uh, village board discussion of possible action regarding approval of state municipal agreement for the DOT and Village of Lannan funded eighty twenty Good Hope Road. Point eight four mile road reconstruction project involving a village financial commitment of not less than one point four, one million, four hundred, one thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars. So you folks might remember that, um, we were awarded a WISDOT grant uh, for the reconstruction of Good Hope Road. Um, as part of that obligation, um, the village is required to commit to a certain portion of the funding. Um, I do not, off the top of my head, head have the specific funding mechanism or timing of said funding. Uh, this is a TIF eligible project. Um, and it is and has been factored into our, um, capital improvement project plan that Ben and I have been working on with Ellers, so, um, it has been taken into account. Um, so what Ben had asked me, um, if I wanted to just sign this and send it along, I just felt that it would be good for the board, uh, the village board, um, to weigh in on this and authorize me to, um, execute this uh, and initiate the funding, um, or at least commit to the funding that's required to receive the grant funding for this project.
Also, we have the funds from Elquest years ago. Three hundred thousand dollars or something like that?
For the, for the park, the lights in the park?
No, no.
Oh, yeah, yes.
To rebuild.
Yes.
The old road.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, so that would, that could be used as well, yes.
You don't have to worry about picking up the rest.
Right. Right. So I guess what I'd be looking for, look, if you have some comments, Hector.
Uh, I think another good reason for the board taking action is that, uh, you're, you're committing to a one point four million dollar obligation and, uh, under, uh, state law, uh, a municipality cannot commit unless there is, uh, reasonable confirmation of the avail, availability of the, uh, funding for what the project. Well, your ratification, I think, will, uh, facilitate the review by, uh, uh, Department of Transportation.
All right, well, I would like to make a motion then that, uh, we approve the action regarding the state municipal agreement for DOT and the Village of Lannan funded Good Hope Road project, which would commit not less than one point four, one million, four hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars. And, um, I would like to note that, um, part of this motion would be to authorize, uh, President Yates to execute whatever, uh, contracts are required to, uh, commit to that obligation.
Would we put in there that the funds would be TIF allowed? That we cover?
There's no need to.
Okay.
Just along the, there's reasonable assurances that there is funding.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, do we have a second back to that motion? We have a second now. Uh, any further discussion for the village board on this matter?
Just a question, I have.
Patrick.
Yes.
So sidewalks on both sides, curb and gutter. Is that all this, with the sidewalks in there because that is on the one sided road, it's business what, three quarters of something these dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Is that? Or because it is improving the road? Are the sidewalks on both sides necessary? Because that's.
A little bit of standard.
Yeah, that's a good question, Don. I, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head, whether or not there was any plans to change that, um, availability, but does say, yeah, with sidewalks on both sides, yeah. So presumably that is in the engineering, but unfortunately Ben's not here to confirm that, but.
So that's not initially on.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, he, they provided, uh, Strand provided all of the cost estimates, um, with the application, so if that was part of the requirement, as it's noted here, and as you pointed out, um, I have to assume that that's that that is in fact included, but that's a good follow-up question.
And I have to wonder if that wasn't maybe done on purpose because I know debt, Ben is also going after grant money for not only planning, but execution of more walkability to, um, to schools and.
Yeah, we have a safe routes to school, um, planning grant that we received from WISDOT as well, um, and there's probably going to be a forthcoming application for some additional funding to actually implement parts of that plan. So, um, yeah. And this would be a full road reconstruction with all new asphalt and or concrete, sub, yeah, all the way down to the base, all new curb and gutter. Yeah. Yeah, well. Yeah, it'll be nice.
We're in the big time now.
Right. Um, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so now we will move back down to the planning commission, uh, item number seven, eight now.
Eight now.
Which is Plan Commission Review and Possible Recommendation to the Village Board for a Conditional Use Use Permit for Chemright Copac LLC to keep a well for production at one nine seven two five West Edgewood Drive, land in Wisconsin, five three oh four six, which includes three separate lots to be utilized by the applicant. Well, I don't know. Moment we've been waiting for here. There should be copies of what is, uh, the current draft of the conditional use permit. I know many of you did not get much time to review this, fortunately, um. It's one of the few legal documents in existence that is only a few pages. So hopefully you've had a chance to review this, um, the applicants are here. Um, thank you very much for making the trip up and hopefully the travel went much easier this time.
Yeah, well, it couldn't have gone any worse, right, than last time?
It, it appeared that way, yeah, yeah. So, thank you for coming, um. Perhaps what we could do is just, uh, take a moment, allow you folks to introduce yourselves, and, um, I see Mr. Witt is not here tonight, but he's adequately represented, so.
Yeah, happy to, thank you. Uh, my name's Tim Spillman and I represent Lewis Park Capital. Uh, we are the primary investors um, in the business we have today, uh, as well as the primary investors if we end up doing the transaction with Mr. Witt and, and Chemright. My brief background, thirty years as an operator. I ran a company that was very similar to Chemright, just much larger. I sit on the board of a different company that does exactly the same thing. And that's our investment strategy. We invest in things that we think we know a little bit about, and more importantly, we can help the company do better than where it's at today. So that's, um, the interest we have in Chemright. And what brings us here today, and I should say we're, we're based in St. Louis, so.
And you have, uh, another facility somewhere else as well, is that correct?
And, and Mr. Davis, when he introduces himself, yeah, he runs, he was the owner of the, the facility we have in St. Louis. And, um, the basic strategy that we have is, if you look at the industry we compete in, first of all, the customers of, of folks of a Chemrite or Mr. Davis's business are very large customers, like Procter and Gamble, for example, or Ecolab, so these are highly sophisticated companies. They typically deal with very large players in the industry. For example, uh, just to get a little bit of sense, Chemright has six filling lines today. The business I ran had fifty one filling lines. The business I sit on the board of has high thirties in terms of filling lines, so most of the businesses that effectively compete and win in this market, of course, have scale, like any manufacturer, right? So the investment thesis that we have at Lewis Park Capital is we look for multiple things. One is great owners, great leaders, great organizations, great people. One, and that's what we found first and will, and what we're seeing certainly with the asset up here to Chemright. But two is, how do we better serve the market than what we do from just one, frankly, little facility, whether that's in St. Louis or Milwaukee or other places that we're looking, right? So our 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 thought is, if we can put together capabilities across multiple facilities. Then our chance of staying and being able to compete with someone. Ten times our size is much better because we can go to the customer and say we have capabilities here, here and here, so for example, the facility in St. Louis. Has different capabilities, makes different products than the facility here, it's the same concept. You're putting chemicals in water in a tank, you're formulating it, you're putting it into different packages, but. What you're actually putting in the package, what type of package it is, et cetera, i- is a bit different, so. So yeah, we have uh multiple facilities and and our plan is to continue to add more and more capabilities, um both here as well as. At other locations if we find the right opportunity. So, and and just to be clear, um Lewis and Clark, we're basically private investors, we're folks that have been operators in our past. Uh and today we find frankly more value and joy and ability to impact more people as investors, as operators. And we let smarter people like Mr. Davis be our operators for us, so so maybe with that I'll turn it over to him.
Okay.
Yeah, uh Will Davis, um Tim kind of covered everything there, so. I just want to say, I'm I'm looking forward to personally working alongside. Uh you all, so thanks for having us, so. Um. Yeah, I've got fifteen, twenty years in in management and leadership positions, um. Before I bought PCI, which is the business just like Chemrite in in St. Louis, I was with Johnson and Johnson for a number of years and. Uh management positions there and. Um decided to take a leap into ownership um of my own small business, so. Partnered up with with Lewis and Clark, Tim and and some other folks in St. Louis and. Um who just described our our strategy moving forward, so I currently am the the CEO and run. The St. Louis location and will be the the CEO also of Chemrite. Um. In saying that though, uh I want to introduce Heather.
Yep.
Um who I think that you all have met, um Heather will be, uh assuming this transaction closes, Heather will be the one leading the site. And and running the operations, um so.
I I was gonna uh ask you to give us your story too, Miss Lyon, because I know you didn't previously get an opportunity.
Yeah, I never formally introduced myself, I'm sorry, I'm Heather Lyon, uh my family owns Chemrite currently.
Yeah.
Um. I have worked at Chemrite many, many years throughout my lifetime in a family operation, I started as the gardener. And I worked my way up. And um very various different positions, um very, very proud of Chemrite and our. History and what we've accomplished at Chemrite, so. Um saying that, I'm also very, very excited about our future um potential with a new company. Um I'm really excited about the growth opportunities for Chemrite and for its people. And also I would not be staying on at Chemrite if I did not firmly believe. That they were very um capable and trustworthy, attending care of all of our employees. And also being good um people in the community, so.
Good. Um. How long has Lewis and Clark been around, is that a new investment group or have you been in existence for a while?
The 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 investors. Have been investing in businesses for over thirty years, Lewis and Clark itself is. Round numbers twenty years and probably invested in. Sixteen to seventeen different operating companies over that time, some of which we still hold, but it's over twenty years, excuse me, because we're. One of them that we still own today, we invested in in two thousand. So uh it's twenty five plus years would be the entity Lewis and Clark's been around.
Is there a typical or an average amount of time you generally hold a company or?
No, we that the beauty, the beauty as a private investor is that. Our time horizon, we have no time horizon because it's our money. You know, the the word you may hear a lot is the private equity world, well, what private equity does, it takes money from third party. And they deploy, well, the third party always wants their money back, you would too, if you, and so they are under extreme time pressures, I've worked. For private equity, I sit alongside private equity on a board, I know that model well, the reason I'm where I'm at is we don't. Time isn't what drives what we do. We get the business to a point where perhaps it's getting too big for us. Or we feel like. There's nothing more we can add here, and when we get to that point, then we look to put the asset in the hands of people who can better manage it.
Yeah.
So ideally, you can do that relatively quickly, but a- as all of you know, you've you know, been in the business world, it's definitely not a linear line. It's a roller coaster and so we ride the roller coaster until we think we've got it to a really good spot.
Yeah. Well, thanks for clarifying that, because I think that's an important distinction for people to understand between, because. Private equity oftentimes carries a bit of a connotation with it, right? Um and and this is different, and I think that's important for us to understand.
Yep.
Okay, so um. Little bit of the process here, I guess I'll just outline for the rest of the commission, um I did go tour the facility with Mr. Paylightner. Um. That was last week, I don't know, they're all, they all blend together. Um. Very impressive, um I was very surprised by the amount of volume they put out of such a small space. It's kind of crazy, but um. Very, very. Uh. Technical business in nature, um very impressive, um. Mr. Witt's done an amazing job. Um it's it's quite an operation and uh he's very proud of it and he should be. Um. We have. Ben, and when I say we, I mean Ben, uh Mr. Wood, our village engineer, Mr. Dale Lamar and myself. Have been going back and forth about some of the mechanics and some of the language that um. We felt uh should be in this. New application, you're all well aware of how we got here today. The situation we're in without an existing conditional use permit in effect, um. That changes the game a little bit for us here, but I guess what I'll do then is allow um Hector to. Walk us through what he deems to be some of the the highlights here. If you will.
Uh first of all, I uh did send. A copy of this to our clerk. And I believe you all may have received it electronically. And in addition, I provided a copy of this to legal counsel. Uh for the uh applicant. And I got no comments back from her today. Uh in that regard. Um. Do you guys got a copy?
We do, yes.
Okay. Uh at this point, uh the village, uh first of all, by way of background. Expended a great deal of time, effort and money in installing a municipal water system. And uh one of the very common attributes of that kind of an installation is. To maximize the number of users within the community that are hooked up. Hence, uh the Lannan ordinance requires that everyone hook up. Unless there's a special exception granted. Previously, uh the soon to be former owner. Had entered into an arrangement whereby they came to the board. And they said, we will establish a deep well. And we need X amount of time to accomplish that. The reason for uh that distinction is that the municipal source is in the shallow aquifer. Uh where the existing well of this company uh also draws water. And. Uh. The state of the law in Wisconsin is that if in fact. Uh there is a shortcoming in the availability of water, uh the municipality gets priority. Now, uh the applicant did not follow through. Uh the applicant did not inform the village of its decision not to proceed. At the prior hearing, the applicant basically represented that it was too costly. And at that point in time, by virtue of the. Uh conditional use permit, it had expired. The village uh basically arranged to have expedited hearings. Uh to facilitate the issuance of. Uh conditional use permit for that operation since they uh no longer were legitimately authorized to operate. And that was done largely because it was disclosed to the village that. The facility, the business was in the process of being transitioned. In that, there would be some retention of ownership of. Either the real estate or the assets for a period of time, at which time then there would be. An acquisition of by this new Chemrite uh Copac LLC. Uh. Despite my request of that LLC attorney three times asking for. Uh documents that detail what the transaction and timing would be. Uh I got nothing back that I can report to you, uh it's just a blind spot. In responses. In any event, uh the expectations. That we discussed in the working group was that. The village is because of safety concerns and regulatory requirements. Uh seeking a third source of water. And that third source of water is anticipated to be made available. Given the preliminary discussions through uh the village discussing. However, those discussions have not been finalized. Uh but it is expected that when the third source of water is in place. That uh the conditional use. Permission here to operate with the use of the existing shallow aquifer well. Will come to an end. Uh and that uh there may be the possibility of. Allowing that well to remain on a standby emergency basis. So. Uh. That was the the essence of what we agreed to in the working group. In addition, there were uh some expressed concerns uh about the disposal. Of water from the premises. Now, we we know from the previous presentation that uh. Product is shipped out, but oftentimes there's regeneration water and there's clear water to be disposed of. And the. Discussions that were held. Uh disclose that there was a certain amount of disposal through the village's sanitary uh sewer system. And. That uh holds the issue of the village having to bear the cost. For the processing of any fluids going through the sanitary system, whether they are. Category uh one wastewater items or uh clear water altogether. And there have been informal discussions about uh someone, either the seller or the buyer. Compensating the village for a calculated uh amount of water that has gone through the system. That uh was not accounted for. And in this particular uh. Conditional use permit. It is contemplated that the applicant is going to essentially come up with a metering system. Uh to provide assurances for all. That uh a fair share of payment is being made for any. Uh water that can legitimately be disposed through the suspect uh. Sanitary sewer system. At this time, we. Have received. Uh some very limited. Uh one off uh lab test results. Uh about the contents of the waters. That have been released into the sanitary sewer system. And we are awaiting of a response from the suspect treatment facility as to whether. Uh that is something that they can with confidence uh treat. Or for that matter, if there is a need for some kind of pre-treatment. Uh that that is understood.
If I may interject, Hector, I just want to clarify a point here, if I may. Um. The the RO system blow down water, which is presumed to be. Uh. In essence, equivalent to drinking water is what's currently going into that sanitary sewer system. The old, the other uh. Waste water that may or may not be allowable to be treated is currently being contained and hauled off site.
That's right. Yes, and that that is category two water. Which uh apparently is being trucked off uh to Crystal Lake, Wisconsin. Uh we've been provided with a contract that's in place for that transportation, but there are no details. As to what the duties or responsibilities of that trucking entity are. And uh there are no warranties in that particular uh document. But be that it is made. Uh. It is uh contemplated that there will be a continuation of these basic steps that have just been. Described at the facility, except that. Uh. At such time as the village issues notice. That it has the capacity with the third source to basically. Provide all the water that uh the applicant needs. There will be an obligation to uh connect. Uh and also there will be an obligation to. Verify that uh occurrence. Uh. Beyond that, uh I I can answer questions if you have any with regards to the document. Or for that matter, for the applicant.
Hector, the nineteen thousand dollars that's uh mentioned on line one forty three, um that um. That number came about through, I'm assuming, some sort of uh calculation that that you were able to obtain?
So that calculation was actually um provided by and proposed by Mr. Witt.
Okay.
Um based on his historical recollection of what transpired. And an estimate of the amount of flow. Uh that it has come out of the facility since two thousand two. Um it also um. This number varies uh slightly from the number that he had estimated, which if if I recall correctly, is about seventeen thousand six hundred dollars. Somewhere thereabouts. Um. With the presumption that his calculation went through the end of twenty twenty four. And by the time this occurs, it'll likely be one quarter into twenty twenty five, and then there's a presumption that there's going to be some additional. Um. Responsibility there for that.
So Mr. Witt and the applicants are on board with that, so.
Well, Mr. Witt is, I don't know about the applicants.
Yeah, certainly, we we've never seen the calculation and. That's a matter for Mr. Witt. The nineteen thousand has nothing to do with us, we have no access to the facility today, so we we really don't have a comment on it, other than. It's not standing for our app for our application, that's a. Co- that's a Chemrite Copac Inc. issue, not a Chemrite Copac LLC issue.
Yep.
And that was one of the many concerns we had with the document was. We won't pay for something that we got no benefit of, we had no part of. But I I would say a couple of quick comments as it relates to. Metering and and dumping in the sewer and and things like that. We fully support, we were asked, would we be okay with the meter, absolutely. When we take ownership, whenever that may be, if we take ownership. If we find that there's things inadvertently going in the sewer, we will stop it immediately, and you have my word on that. And so I don't believe there's any, we haven't independently verified, these are reps and warrants from the seller at this point. But I want all of you to hear that. We believe that we have a healthy company when we are surrounded by a healthy community in all aspects. We don't expect to do anything different than anyone else is afforded to do, and certainly as it relates to discharge, I've spent. Twenty years in chemical industries, I've seen a lot of chemists.
Yep.
And I know exactly how destructive they can be to human health, and so I I want you to know we take this incredibly seriously. And if in fact, there's anything that's inappropriate, if your testing comes back with it, under our watch, it'll be remedied ASAP. Metering, happy to do it. Can't commit to March thirty-first, we may not even be closed by March thirty-first. I have no ability. To put a piece of equipment into an asset I don't even know. So, you know, I I think the principles that uh were laid out, we support completely. Where we differ a bit is perhaps on some of the details.
Yeah.
Which we can get into or not tonight. I don't want to take all of your time this evening either, so we're sensitive to that.
Yeah, well, I I I appreciate that you um understand uh our concerns and what we're trying to do.
For sure. I have the same concern, by the way. If. We do not want to be owners of assets that are potentially harming our employees, our customers, or the community.
Yeah.
Absolutely not.
Well, and to be clear, we know Mr. Witt and we know Heather and and we're not making the accusation that we think, I mean, just. Purely by having wastewater being trucked off-site is telling me that they are conscious. Of the effects um of disposal and they wouldn't be paying anyone to haul stuff away if they weren't. Only putting in that that which could not go into the sanitary sewer, so. I I don't think we're casting aspersions, but we are protecting ourselves.
Well, yeah, we historically, the village um. Just be very candid, has not had a a great track record of memorializing and documenting. Arrangements as exhibited by this. That this un-metered expulsion into the sewer system that's happening today. It's a prime example. These are things that um. We don't in principle, I think, have any objection to. We just think that it needs to be documented, it needs to be clearly communicated who's responsible for what and um. And that should be on file with the clerk. You know, it's uh and so we're.
And it should be paid for because the village is paying for the treatment of that water. It has been, has been for quite a number of years, so I I feel the best here.
So, so I hope you understand and appreciate that that's kind of um. The position that we've come at this with um and sometimes. Over the last couple of years, as we've tried to tighten up some of these things uh procedurally. Um it it oftentimes smacks of overcorrection, but that's not the intent. So I think this is, I don't think anybody came here expecting this to just get, you know. Rubber stamped, everybody's happy and we go out and have a couple beers afterwards. This is probably gonna take some refining and um. But it's a good place to start.
I have uh officially just one item, and that's uh about line eighty-two. Leading up to line eighty-two, uh we start about eighty. After the grant, he had first connected in the municipal water system for production use, it may then apply for new cup to retain the existing well for such use. My question is this next sentence, otherwise the existing well shall only be used for the production of product which is shipped off premises. I'm kind of confused of how that sentence applies here. I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're missing a word or a word that I thought.
Are correct. Uh the version that I sent out to the applicant's attorney. On line eighty-two, instead of the word otherwise. Simply says, in all instances, the existing well shall only be used for the production of product. Which is shipped off premises.
Meaning that municipal water can be used for all other purposes, like like the bathrooms and the kitchen break room and yeah. Yeah, good catch, Mike. You know, the detail guy.
Hector, you had a furrowed brow and it looked like you were about to comment on um.
Yes.
Perhaps my comments.
Uh not on your comments as much as uh. This is a special permit, a special exception. And if there is an intention on the part of the. Board or the recommendation of the planning commission to negotiate the details here further. I recommend you not approve it until there is a meeting of the minds. The intent in sending out the information. To council was to afford them the opportunity to have input. So that tonight, the board could take action. Because we have been in the dark as to what their clothing plans are, which we would have learned by looking at the documents. Uh we indicated that uh any proprietary or confidential information. Uh would be extracted, should be extracted from there, but for reasons unknown to me. Uh they were not forthcoming in that regard, so. Uh the the village has the option of basically getting a consensus that this is. Where you want to be. And if you further want to uh consider negotiating. Well, then my strong recommendation is that you not approve this conditional use permit.
But Hector, we haven't gotten any feedback from the applicants that that they request negotiation, so. I I'm a little bit confused as to why we could as take action on this tonight because they haven't requested any changes to it, right? I mean, it's.
Okay, I inferred from the comment that was made that this is the the subject of further discussion, but.
Oh, okay.
Well, I I and I inferred that um. From the comment uh regarding the the specific date. Now, that's the only thing, but we have not provided the applicant an opportunity to address possibly other items within here. Um which I'm gonna make an assumption, uh they may have comments about. But the date at a minimum uh as presented uh. Makes sense because we don't know the timing of the transaction. Again, to Hector's point about. We haven't seen specific documents relative to the transfer of ownership and things of that.
Yeah, well, I'm happy to address the date and I'm happy to address the requests around uh the APA or the asset purchase agreement. The asset purchase agreement has a blank date for the day of closing. Because we don't know the date of closing.
Right.
If we don't have a permit that we think we can access the well or your water and operate effectively. Operate economically viable in 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 the industry. We're not making the investment. So, you know, I could provide you the purchase agreement. If I redacted the confidential information, it would be a useless document. And and if you're searching for. You know, what is our closing plan? Our closing plan is when all the conditions are met in terms of diligence, we'll close. It could be next week, it could be next month, it could never happen.
I could respectfully disagree with that. It I it is not uncommon to have a floating or undetermined closing date. The things that I was interested in, the village should be interested in, what are those three conditions? What kind of information or data is necessary?
Sure.
And not necessarily financial information.
Right. And and the conditions left in closing are simply the diligence that we're doing as investors. The diligence that's open is not documented um in our in our closing docs or in our asset purchase agreement. There are of course are are conditions to closing, things like you gotta have an, you gotta have the lease executed, et cetera, et cetera. There there's not a, there's not a dot an item in our document that says. The well permit has to be issued. It's not in there. There's not a document that says we're comfortable with item A regarding certain customers or item B regarding. Certain safety issues or item C regarding this. These are things that we continue to explore. So again, you wouldn't get a feel for that through looking at the document.
So you're just, I'm sorry, go ahead, no.
So I I'm gonna, I'm I'm gonna step out on a limb here and I'm gonna make an assumption that really. I mean, there's nothing about this business that you're unfamiliar with based on. Your experiences that you all have in this industry. My guess is is that um your primary concern is availability of water. And any costs associated with such.
That's one of of two primary concerns. That's correct.
So um, you know, I think. In some of my discussions with Mr. Witt, I I was very clear to point out that I am simply one member of the planning commission, one member of the board. I have one vote. I don't, I haven't ever gotten the impression from this commission or this board um that any, you know. We wouldn't be reasonable in the granting of a conditional use permit. Obviously, there are some details that have to get vetted out on our side too. So I think we're getting caught in a little bit of a, there there's a little bit of a standoff kind of situation there and and I don't mean that in an adversarial sense, but it's like. The chicken or the egg, right? Like which one's gonna come first? Who's gonna, you know, commit first? Who's gonna draw first, whatever, right? So um. I I think that's the gonna be the challenge that we're faced with is. How do we resolve that? And and I think what uh council is probably looking for is um. A better understanding of your level of commitment or what those triggers might be for you.
Sure.
Is that fair to say?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, and I'm happy to address it. As long as the commission and the board want to sit through it, we can negotiate the whole thing. I spent five hours on a plane today and I'll, I'm happy. That's to sit here until, you know, yeah. So I want to make it very clear that we are prepared. To try to reach an agreement this evening i- if so inclined, and if we can get there. I also appreciate. You're probably getting tired of talking about these addresses that every board meeting, so I want to be respectful, but. If I can make just a couple of general comments about the concept. The concept is, hey, you're investing money to expand the water infrastructure. And make frankly, a more robust community. We support that a hundred percent. I said it already, which is. We want to be in robust communities that are growing and are progressive. That helps us grow, it helps our employees grow, et cetera. We understand, because this is what we do all day long, is you deploy money, you make an investment, and you need to get your money back, of course. We support the city making this investment. A more robust water source is critically important for all residents and it's critically important for us as a business. We a hundred percent support that. We will absolutely participate in getting you recovery of your investment. Yeah, the petition is written, unfortunately, says, in essence. No matter what quality we give you, and we're not assuring you we're gonna get flow every day, all day. You have to take it. And I I mentioned before, we work in a scale industry as a small player. The the problem that we have is if if one of our suppliers fails to deliver, and it happens sometimes. Bottle supplier doesn't supply on time, they give you bottles that leak. Um there's two things that happen. We disappoint and fail to meet our customers' needs. And remember, they can go to someone bigger than us. Normally, this results in an economic penalty to us. Which we're in a pennies business, that economic penalty goes back to the benefit. And that's how it has to work or or we don't survive. And and that was how it worked when I was in a large-scale organization, so. My, our proposal is, look, we may have days where our surge is six, seven times what we do on a normal day. Mr. Davis took a business and in three years, he took the revenue up five times from what it was when he bought it in three years. And we expect similar outcomes here. There will be days where we will surge, we will pull a lot of water. Can the infrastructure handle it without disruption to other residents? Nobody knows. We don't know, you don't know. So I think that to say you come on ours, you shut off your well. To use it on an emergency basis doesn't work, and we can get into why why that is um. Is really putting a risk on the city that if you don't perform. It puts us in an adversarial relationship where suddenly you're a supplier not performing for us. We don't want that.
You could sink a deep well.
We're we're, we we could sink a deep well, but but we're, oh, we agree with that.
Here is that the the solution to needing a consistent, reliable flow of water. Was to have a redundant system that was held within your property by having your existing well and sinking a deep well. All we're doing is reacting to the fact that you didn't do what you had proposed you were going to do to fix the problem that you're now bringing back.
So if we commit to a deep well, then the permit, then this, we don't have to come on city water? Is that, is that what you're suggesting?
Is that what you'd rather us do? Well.
Well, n- no.
I didn't think so, yeah.
That's not, and and but in response to some of your comments um. First, I I'd like to start with a question. How many of your other facilities rely solely on their own source of water through a well, their own well? Yours?
Yeah, in in my, in a previous life, we had multiple facilities that had a well. And generally, they were actually dual source.
But but typically now, they're all on some sort of municipal system, right?
For sure, at a minimum, they have a municipal system that is a backup, but absolutely. Just because of the growth of the infrastructure of water over the last, you know, twenty, thirty years.
Yeah, it's been a football, yeah.
Right.
So um and it's my understanding that your current well. Um only has a capacity, a maximum capacity of about eighty gallons per minute.
That's correct.
So it would stand to reason that as long as we can provide a consistent flow of eighty gallons per minute. At a reasonable quality level, that would be expected of a standard municipal system. That we could in fact meet all of your demands. As they are today. Right?
Sure, and 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 I, if the city is willing to stand behind that commitment. That's great. I think that you don't have to stand behind that commitment. We have a second source. And therefore, we don't become adversaries, potentially adversaries.
And 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 again, we're not trying to be adversary here, but. And so we're not, we're not trying to push this there. What we're trying to do, and and we are very well aware of the concern and the. From you as an operator and how important that source is to you. So we understand that, and we tried to be very sensitive to that in the crafting this document. So that even though we feel we may very well be able to provide that kind of flow even today. But we're not pushing the issue today because we don't have a backup source. And we know that accidents happen and emergencies happen. We had one recently, I'm sure you've heard about it. Okay, that's also why we've very uh intently. Crafted language in here to allow the the continued. Uh existence of the well rather than um abandoning it like we've. Um done with the rest of the community by ordinance, because we understand that. Being down for even a a number of hours can can have severe impact to your business. And we don't want to get put into that position where it becomes adversarial or there's some financial liabilities for us or for you. So we've tried to be very sensitive to that in here, but and and I think that what we've come up with. Are some some provisions in here that help protect both of us.
I I su- I support exactly what you just said. I a hundred percent support that approach. If you get into a bit of the details of of the proposed or the draft cup. It says, basically, once we're hooked up. Ninety days later, this cup goes away, or the our permit goes away. We can no longer use our well. And we can apply for a new one, and maybe we'll get it, and maybe we'll get other conditions and past sewer bills attached, who knows? And so if your intention is, no, no, we want you to have this backup, I would suggest a different procedure there, which is. Why terminate the cup? Why not let the cup reside? And and I would also say, we want to be very transparent about the definition of emergency, like. We may say every day is an emergency and we're running, you know, our well and you're going, oh, this is convenient, you're not pulling any water anymore. So I. I'm uncomfortable for both parties that emergency should be defined a bit better and we'll never get it perfect, but. Let's get a little more transparency on both sides to make sure we're singing out of the same hymnal there.
Sure, sure. No, I I think that's a a very valid point. Yeah.
The the one thing I'm seeing that is. Irregardless. Whoever has Chemrite up there right now. Needs to put in a meter by March thirty-first. Whether it's new people, old people, whatever, but someone needs to put it in by March thirty-first. Otherwise, the way I read this is it will be charged three thousand dollars a quarter until it's put in.
For the for the discharge.
For the discharge, and that don't matter who is running the place. You know, we're requiring that meter to be put in. Uh you know, that's that's the bottom line, and whether you have it, you still have it, you know. Someone needs to do it. So so I mean, that's a separate, I see that, you know, a separate issue, but it's in the cup because we. Had to put it someplace so it can be done.
And and that's the, that's the challenging part is that we we have a transition that's in limbo here, but it's got to get attached to one or the other, right?
Yeah, but I would say that the meter. So, but I would say that the meter, which again, we indicated we're happy to have it. The billing of the back uh, uh, charges, that would be in the cup. Of the current owner. Is it not in that cup?
And, and, and I thought that nineteen thousand was what Mister Witt was gonna be paying.
But it's in my cup, it's in my cup, you know, that's, that's my, that's my, it should be in the other cup, I don't know what's in the other.
Something about that, I went back, I go, wait a minute, who are we writing a cup for?
So, so they don't have a c- a conditional use permit, that's the point.
Right now, they can be shut down.
But I, I thought they.
They can be shut down right now.
Okay, we did, okay, yeah, you're right.
Suggested was approved. We just haven't seen the document.
Yeah, okay.
What, what you have to understand is that. Backs and conditions have not remained static. This uh, information about the disposal of. Category one water through the sewer system was not appreciated at the time. That Mister Witt was before the board. Uh, in December, asking for a conditional use permit for itself. Uh, and the interest of the village is only that. Somebody paid for that, acknowledged that, number one. And number two, that mechanism be put in place. So that there can be monitoring, because we're not gonna have somebody there. Uh, watching the flow.
And you should, I, I, I agree with those comments.
Yeah.
And I just, we're not a standing to the calculation, the activity, like, it's just. It doesn't belong with us, but I, if I was in your shoes, I would do exactly what you're doing. I would just put it in the cup of the kernel.
Well, that's fine. And, and again, you said there were two concerns that you had.
Sure.
Availability of water, what's the second?
The second is quality, but more importantly, quality than as it relates to the cost. So, um.
Please explain that, that.
Sure, happy to. So this is an EPA registered facility. It has the ability to make products that are governed by the EPA, or excuse me, FDA, FDA, sorry, you're, you're EPA. The FDA, and so what happens is about every eighteen months, the FDA brings auditors in, um, and they do what. Auditors do, depending on the auditor, some are good audits, some aren't so good. The FDA, uh, post COVID has been hypersensitive around water quality. My former company had a problem, I was gone from there, the FDA came in. And basically shut the facility down for a month, and it almost bankrupt the company because they had a water problem. Water, as it should be, is a critical issue uh, for the FDA.
Was that from a municipal source, or was that from a well?
That was from a municipal source. Yeah, it's in San Luis City, so yes, it was from a municipal source.
And what is your concern about obtaining water from a municipal source? For example, Malaman, I don't really know the chemistry here, but. We chlorinate the water, we don't add any fluoride to it. You chlorinate the water, we let it sit. We obtain the water from the same basic source. The, the shallow pepper for. So where is the concern?
Sure, no, great question. So the concern isn't that your water will be of inferior quality, the concern was that. In the cup, you were very specific to not give any quality representation whatsoever.
We can't.
I, I understand that, I, I understand that, and I agree with you, you can't, but then on my side. I'm agreeing to something that I don't know what's gonna come in my plant. I understand high probability. That it's gonna be great, but if it's not of high quality, the investments we have to make. Because of the FDA oversight, and frankly, our commitment to our customers. Could become very costly for us. It, those who toured the plant hopefully got a sense for, we spend a lot of money on, on water systems. And we have to, and, and so.
Assure that the quality of the water that you get from that well.
We test it, we test water nonstop, every step of the process.
Comes up sour, so to speak, what do you do that?
We, so our system is designed for the deficiencies that we have periodically to rectify, or else we don't produce with it.
And why can't you do that with the municipal?
We certainly could. What we don't know is what the expense will be. And if the expense is such that's like, wow, this is three X of what we're paying today, I can't pass that on to my customers.
And how could the village possibly anticipate that for your business?
I'm not asking you to.
Report that tells our community that we regularly test and it's good to drink. Um.
But, but I think, first of all, we're not suggesting the city can do that. I think one of the issues you're having though is. I think you're expanding dramatically your water capability. That probably means you're getting water from somewhere different than where you are today. Water that you don't actually know what it is.
Increase the distribution of the water that has always been in the same aquifer that you draw from and has serviced. Part of the village for quite some time. What we've done with the water's situation is not. To tap a new source, but to expand the distribution of that source. Um, and, and furthermore, then, so, so, so from my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong. But we need to have additional uh, uh, sources, I'm sorry, not additional sources, but. Additional volume available to us, and this is where we're connecting with another municipality. Now, what happens if we start, rather than giving water to Sussex, we start drawing water from Sussex. Because of the natural ebbs and flows of usage. Now, all of a sudden, what is, does Sussex need to assure to you that if some of the water that comes from the Sussex, um, re- system?
It's, it would be our water. We, we're purchasing it from Sussex.
Yeah.
My point is that I don't think anybody could really guarantee.
I agree with you.
His, his water, so, so you're saying if you connect to the municipal water, you may abandon your own internal filtration system?
No.
So I don't, I don't.
I, I guess not what I was saying. What I was saying is, we don't know, none of us know, we've all agreed that no one can reckless warn. The quality of the water on day one, how it will interact in our facility. Ninety days, we have to abandon our well that works very well for us, serves our customers well, provides. Meaningful employment for our sixty employees is a very short amount of time, very short amount of time to figure out. Do we have this right? For example, if we have to install new infrastructure, we won't even have the parts in ninety days.
Right.
So I'm not asking for the city, if you wanna put me on like, you have no choice but ours, and I'm gonna say, fine, then you guarantee me that you can help me protect. I know you can't do that. I don't want you to do that. I wanna be able to say, let us use our well. As a supplement to your flow to make sure that we're not messing with the infrastructure of your system because suddenly we have a, a big, a big order. And if the quality isn't there, which I think is low probability, but if it's not. We don't have to shut down until we figure it out.
Okay.
We will work with you. What I can't and not comfortable doing is unilaterally saying without anybody knowing. Quality and or cost, sure, I'll sign up for that. I, that would be. Really, really reckless towards the employees of our company. I will assure you that we want to buy water from you. I, I've said it already that. We know we will be part of your recovery. We want to be part of the recovery. We really do. Until we get there and we can together figure out. Tim was worried about a whole lot of things for no reason, and I hope we get there, great. I just am concerned about in writing, you committed in ninety days, this is what you're doing, the ninety days are up. And we're like, we have to shut down until we figure this out, and that's, that's. Why I said I agree in principle with what you're doing, we want you to do it, we wanna support it. There's some details here that just make me very uneasy, but there's solutions, lots of them.
All right, so. Let me share with you the thinking behind the ninety days. You're getting a five-year permit here. And you're being told upfront, we're gonna be deploying and getting a third source.
Right.
There was an expectation that as an operator, because you have special privileges. You'd be the only commercial operation that's drawing the quantity of water. That is being drawn now, and that you intend to elevate. There's an expectation that early on, you would interact with this utility. That we're gonna be obtaining water from after we have an agreement, which we will share with you. And that you start planning so that you don't do nothing until you get the letter.
Sure, but, but until the water comes through the infrastructure into our facility. We don't know. I understand what you're saying, take samples of water from wherever, hey, that's great, that's not reality. Until it gets delivered to us, we really don't know what quality we have, and therefore what equipment or changes we need to make.
You go to, you go to the bathroom sink and take a quality sample, that's the bill of water coming to you now.
Right.
We could, and is that exactly where it's coming from tomorrow? Cause I thought I heard you're going to another community, so.
If, if, if anything, if it does come from another community, it's being blended what we have here now.
But that's two chemistries, that may not result with the same chemistry you have. You just need to appreciate how thick a water actually is and, and the interaction of it in our formulations, it's incredibly thick. We, we have no problem planning.
Right.
It, when we feel like this is a valid sample, but obviously, if we're being asked to invest over hundreds of, under, over a hundred thousand dollars. I'm not doing that on a sample taken, you know, twenty miles away. It's, it's gonna be, once we see it in our facility, this is what we're gonna get every day.
Where are you drawing the figure of a hundred thousand?
I just, my knowledge of what certain aspects of an RO system, particularly a, a mass scale. Boss, and what some of the rectifications the company I used to work for had to do, based on their problems.
Oh, I, I guess I would operate it under the presumption you would use the same RO system that's currently in place.
Well, could we? It depends on the chemistry of the new water. We, we sure hope so. I mean, that would be ideal. Unfortunately, it doesn't generally work that way in chemistry, but we would hope it would.
So what, just again, cause I'm not a water guy either, I, I make science. Um, what, um, what possible contaminant or. I won't even label it a contaminant. What do you anticipate could be in water coming from this third source? Which is a neighboring community that might significantly impact your ability to use that water with your current system?
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're, the most common uh, issue in water today is, I guess it's a contaminant called dissipation.
Can you spell that?
No.
I.
I can, I really can't, I really can't.
Say it again?
Dissipation, we're happy to provide you a lot of information about it. It's. It's a contaminant that the FDA is very keen on, it's a contaminant that is common in, in all water. And really, you're managing it to a, a level that um, is below any prescribed concern level. But it's, it's not the only, it is but one, and I'm not a water expert either, I mean, I was a accountant, so um. That's why I can't spell dissipation, but.
Is it a, is it a, a? Yeah, yeah, bacterial contaminant?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mike, Mike, one other consideration though, is the third source is gonna be a deep well.
Right.
It's totally different.
But it's still, it's still being blended in your pipelines.
Yeah, but it also is exposed to the radon, and you gotta take the radon out, and I don't know what parts per million is gonna end up with them. So, right, it, it, it is going to be different when that happens.
Well, I'm sure though that it's not only gonna affect them, I think it's gonna affect everybody's community. When you start on parts per million that could hurt somebody, you know, you're gonna have a whole village of uprooted people.
A year ago, we.
Like that's anything new.
Yeah, right.
They hurt less when they throw them.
Um, no, I, I mean, these are, so I, I agree with you and I appreciate the concern, and I understand you're um. Pointing out the distinction, right? Cause it is a, a bit of an unknown. Now, we could. We could theoretically go over to Sussex and, and go to my buddy's house over there, and I can pull a sample from his house and. It's basically gonna be that water, right? At least today.
But we don't know how those pipes are constructed versus how our pipes are, I mean, obviously, water's gotta carry through a medium, so. You know, I, it's just, there's just a lot of unknowns, and, and we are willing to walk with the city through these unknowns. I'm just not willing to blindly commit that we will do this within ninety days until I see what I'm dealing with.
Dude, are you doing half the timeframe?
I mean, we propose, our, our engineer in the site thought, if you gave us a year. Not that we wanna take the whole year, because look, if it, if it works really well. We'd rather draw from one source every day, that's a lot easier than drawing from two sources and having two systems, right? So, but if it's a year, we would feel very protected with a commitment that we're gonna work in, in haste. But not take the year just because, but it's a protection for us to make sure that. You know, cause we may come back and say, hey, this doesn't work for us, and here's why, and let's go to a different solution. We fully, we expect, and I think high probability, that we'll come back and say, we can make this work. And here's, you know, how we think it works best for both sides.
What about six months with the option of an extension under certain?
You know, again, I'm not an equipment supplier to know what kind of backlog they're gonna have, two or three years or one year.
We just went through some modifications with our RO system that literally took six months to implement. They brought a piece of equipment. That ended up not working properly, they had to go and take it back, and. So really, just from a standpoint, from the equipment standpoint, and installation of new equipment, it does sneak a little bit.
Uh, we, we certainly can appreciate that. We've been doing a lot of uh, upgrades and new facilities that. Um, we, we, we've had to wait for electrical components, yeah, we redid all the electrical and.
Water is easier than electric.
Plus, we have to shut down our operation to do this.
Right.
Do these changes, we can't be producing, so that also is a scheduling and a loss of profit.
So, right.
And what's, what's the harm to land into the village to give them more time?
Yeah, that's my question.
It's, it's just a policy decision, is really what it comes down to.
But we gave you a year. But then you knew in six months, everything's going really well.
Yeah.
Then you come back and say, hey, we're good? Or you're gonna wait the six, the other six months?
Again, uh, if, if we know before that, we would advise you of that. Now, again, I wanna be clear though, we still believe that having the well available to us. As a secondary source is part of, is part of the, the plan, but.
Yeah.
Um, if, if, look, if you can provide us the flow we want, um. It's always a sim- make life simple, okay? And so if we could do that and it worked great, we're, we're with you. We may try to run our well, but the challenge with the well on an emergency basis is you have a pump submerged in water. When you put, tell it not to work, and then ask it to work, it doesn't like that.
Yeah.
They like to run or not, and, and so we would have, that's our issue to figure out, like. How are we gonna keep this well so that it's effective for us as a backup? Don't know. We'll, we'll figure it out, but that's where I got concerned about. The emergency basis may not be right. We may need to run it once a week. This is way beyond my scope of expertise, but some of the finer points that, you know, we have to think through.
The, the, we had this discussion, we went back and forth on this, and it's like, you know, the, water's funny, you wanna keep it moving, right? And, you know, how do you, the challenge came and, and. We didn't wanna put a, a burden on you to figure it out, but ultimately, I think there might have to be some understanding of. I- i- if there's an agreement to allow, you know, uh, variable use like that. Um, how does that get monitored? How does it get controlled?
Yeah.
Um, you know, those are all things that we have to take into consideration.
Sure, and, you know, for example, we could commit to, you know, you know, seventy percent, eighty percent of our water usage is municipality. Once it's deemed appropriate, and we'll commit to month-end recording it, and I'm assuming we can do this, guys, in terms of monitoring how much we're pulling from one versus another. We have no issue with um, being incredibly transparent, and again, we want it to work. I mean, we, we really do.
Yeah, and that way with cycle your well, you take fifteen, twenty percent off of it, it cycles.
Exactly.
You can have a meter on our well, if we read, just the same as to meter the.
If you do that, if you do, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
If you do that, are you willing to pay the equivalent price for the water you're drawing from the ground? From the well?
Oh, if, for sure, if, if, if the economics are the same, that's a win for all of us. You get what you need. We're not looking to make money on it. My concern is the opposite. Your water costs me three times what mine does, and I can't pass that on to my customer, my customer goes elsewhere, I go dark. But, so this is not a, like, hey, let's see if we can get more opportunity for us, not at all. Well, if, if it would be a push, we would be incredibly excited about that.
Keep in mind, um, that, uh, pun intended, is a bit of a fluid situation as well. Because what's gonna happen is we have this um, agency over in Madison called the Public Service Commission. And um, they're not very cooperative, um, and. What's likely going to happen is there's going to be a lot of um, a lot of flux happening. When these things start, when these dominoes start to fall, so. Let, under the presumption that we do get an interconnection with Sussex. Sussex does not currently have an established wholesale water rate. So they are going to have to establish a wholesale rate, so that means they're gonna, for the first year, they're gonna pull a number out of a hat. And then a year later, the PSC is gonna make them do a rate case and they're gonna come up with a true wholesale rate.
Yeah.
And that's what they're gonna charge us. Similarly, we're gonna have to go through the same type of mechanics with the PSC. Um, because now we are gonna have an additional source. And presuming that you come online, you actually represent about the equivalent of about thirty households. Uh, of water use by our calculations.
Presently.
Yeah, presently, at your current volume.
Yep.
Now, you, you anticipate that you wanna double, triple, maybe even more. This guy's a rock star, he's gonna.
No pressure, Will.
Be water shooting out of the roof of that place. Um, so, um. You know, so it, it's, that is going to have an impact on our rates.
Yep.
Right? But all of these things are going to take literally years to settle themselves.
Sure.
Through this, these steps, right? So, I, I think we and you have to be aware of that and understand that. You know, this is, the way it looks the day that we both agree we're ready to flip the switch is, is not, it's gonna look different. A year from then, two years from then.
Yeah.
Um.
And, and, and obviously then, you know, market conditions always change and, and, and our concern really isn't as much about. The absolute price. It's the price we pay relative to a competitor and what they pay, right? So what will happen from Sussex, et cetera. Presumably what we do when we don't know things is we look to others. And that's what we would love for them to do is if you look to others who are providing water at cost to my competitor. And we're using the same approach to life, then I'm in good shape because I'm not disadvantaged from my competitor. And then we'll beat them on our employee base. I know we will. I just don't wanna be in a, you know, in a gunfight with a knife because I'm upside down on the water.
Do you happen to know what you're paying per thousand gallons at your other plants for water? Cause that might be an interesting piece of information to know.
Yeah, I, I certainly don't. I don't know, Will, I have that, not on my, off the top of my head.
All right, so the other issue we have here that was brought up is that this conditional use permit is to Kim Wright Co-Pac LLC, which is the new entity.
Right.
So I think if we were to distill this down and, and, and I'm just gonna say, I think some of this is, tell us what it is you're looking for. We will then discuss whether we can accommodate that. So what you'd like on this conditional use permit is that it not be Co-Pac LLC, it be the existing entity. And that it, it becomes, okay. So, so go back a little bit because he's, he's also bringing up the fact that he doesn't wanna pay nineteen thousand dollars because the cup is in his.
That's just a small piece of this right now. This needs to be for them.
Yeah.
Right.
Please understand, during our discussions, we uh deliberated whether this. Conditional use permit should be issued to the LLC or to the company.
Right.
The company currently has a conditional use permit. It's not in writing, but it's memorialized in the minutes. This conditional use permit is akin to a liquor license. You're the owner of a building that had a saloon facility in it. But you're not running it, you're not controlling it. And therefore, the license is unique to the operator.
Okay.
And in this particular situation, again, I keep going back to my requests of them, which they avoid. They, the LLC is gonna be the operator. And hence, this was crafted as this document giving them rights to, to do certain things.
Right.
So uh, that's the way uh we're approaching this.
I, I think paragraph K, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tim. Um, I, I can appreciate that you don't wanna sign on for something that's not really your obligation. It's a historical obligation, but.
Correct.
Since what we're trying to do here is, is memorialize and document the historical occurrences and the conditions. Uh, couldn't your attorney simply write something into the asset purchase agreement that, that says any and all um. Previous obligation to the municipality are the, you know, sole obligation of the seller?
Sure, th- they could. I mean, obviously that costs me money for my attorney to write that in and then it's gonna be negotiated with the other side. The problem I have is that there's a document, the public document with our name that suggests we were deficient in the past. I don't like that, cause that's, that's not true.
Yeah.
And so I would encourage you to think about the mechanism to assign the issue and the economic cost to the appropriate party. We, we are, yes.
So the easy way to salute it, to make a solution for this is to table this. Until the attorneys can all get together and figure out what they wanna write.
Well, there's another alternative, and that is for uh Co-Pac's company. Inc. to write a.
Thank you.
Okay, company is the equivalent in Wisconsin as an INC. Anyway. Uh, the reality is, if there is a mutual acknowledgement that there was ooh ooh moment. When water was put in sewer system, why doesn't Co-Pac Inc. just write a check? Because that's, that's water down the drain, so to speak.
You would want some kind of documentation in place showing what the bill was and details of it, but it doesn't belong in this topic, I guess is the point.
Yeah, we, we could have a separate document.
Separate issue that we Inc. would like to take care of and are happy to take care of.
Sure.
But it doesn't belong.
Well, I, I would recommend that Mr., your attorney.
He's on vacation right now.
Well, that's fine. Somebody on your behalf, prepare the documentation. All of a sudden, you know, we're talking about millions of gallons of water. And your buyer, he doesn't want to pay the attorney to, to modify this document when in fact.
Well, it's not really his responsibility.
It's not my responsibility, it's not a matter, it's a matter of principle, it's not a matter of dollars.
Well, understood. So, yeah, so if we. Um, if we, if this paragraph K gets then amended in such a way that simply indicates that. Uh, within a certain period of time, there will be uh. A village approved metering device for this blowdown um water. Um. Is that?
Yeah, we, we, we've already, in, in dialogue with the attorney, we've already said we're fine with the meters.
Yeah.
Um, I can't be penalized when I have no ability to control actually when it gets put in. What I may suggest, so this, we don't spend all night, is we're happy to take the pen. Um, and it would probably be more me than our attorney, take a pen and provide what we think. Capturing the spirit of what we said tonight.
Yep.
And turn it back uh for the commission, the board, whoever's the right uh designee to interact with me. On um trying to find a solution that works for both. I think we're actually fairly close and we could mince words all night long and I just think. Out of respect for everybody sitting here, I'm not sure that's the best use of the collective time, I think, of the folks.
Yeah, I, I, I agree and it, and the impression that I've been given is that this is not um. It's more important to you to get this right than it is to get it done quickly. Is that fair?
Ideally both, but if I have to choose, I'm gonna get it done right, cause I'm gonna live with it forever. And that's a long time. So yes, if it takes us another month, we've been at it a long time, but let's get it right. And, and I also wanna make sure that as we enter a relationship with the village. That you don't feel like, oh, that's convenient, didn't hear about that, cause everybody was rushing and it wasn't intentional. We wanna make sure that, hey, there's plenty of time for you to vet our intentions. And so that there's no one coming into this saying, if only I had known that. Usually only with time helps that.
I, I'll be honest with you, the timeline that we were operating in, just to try to get to where we are here tonight made me uncomfortable and. Put a lot of pressure on, uh, you know, Hector and Ben and.
Basically, just for your peace of mind. I don't see, you know, I can see this cup gonna go through eventually. It's, it's pretty much, we can wipe out the whole paragraph K all the way down to basically line one fifty-nine. You know, where, where it just talks about that.
Meter.
If Co-Pac Inc. doesn't have the meter in by the time they buy the, uh, or sign the contracts. That they are aware that there is a three thousand dollar quarter charge on the discharge in some sewer system. I mean, that, that's, that's all you have to write in there basically, but I'm not the lawyering like that, that's what we paid them lawyers for. So I guess the whole line then is, is if we end up tabling this while they correct those items. I hope it doesn't scare you and think, oh, you're, we're not gonna get signed fast, cause they're, we're gonna come back and they're gonna, oh, you, now. You guys want four bushes put over here and uh we want orange lights on the outside? No, that's not what's gonna happen. The only thing is, we're just gonna try to correct two items maybe is, is, is let the attorneys and, 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 and the engineers and all that. Work out on the ninety days. And I don't see a year. I'm sorry, I just can't agree for a year, but, but because if the water system's put in, say by the end of twenty-seven. You should easily, you know, by that time, by the middle of twenty-eight, you'll already know what, what the, what the water is, you know.
Sure, we just, we just can't predict the supply chain challenges that the water suppliers may have for us.
Right.
And we don't, we can't run the risk of not being able to produce the appropriate quality water at the right price.
And then, so the only other thing would be then is how they rewrite K. I mean, everything else is pretty much, is everybody's been agreeing to.
I, I think.
I think, yeah, I think there's a couple of things, I think. One is, thank you for the comment about. Um, that these are the issues and the issues won't creep as we dialogue. Part of the reason Will and I made the trip up was. Uh, we are prepared to move forward with this even in limbo, subject to how things felt here. And um if we feel like we have a meeting of the minds and the words aren't right yet. We got bigger things to do, let's go win together, right? So I, I, I very much appreciate the, your comment. I think in addition to K and, and that, I, I think there's also, we want a little more clarity around the use of our current well. It, it's not just an emergency business. I think there's some tweaking there as well. And then we may agree to disagree on the timeframe we need as we transition from one to the other and we'll see where that ends up.
So, so I would, yeah, I would agree with your suggestion that I think maybe the next uh logical step. Is to take some of the feedback and this, this discussion that we've had tonight. Um, have your attorneys uh respond um. With as much additional detail as they may or may not be able to provide that's been requested by council. Um. We can initiate some conversations with Kim Wright Co-Pac Inc. um regarding the uh existing discharge issue. Um, and I think we can pretty quickly satisfy that. Um. And then uh we'll bring this back. Um, we can talk directly if you're more comfortable with that, if, if you wanna let the attorneys talk back and forth or if we, we can.
I generally prefer to do it non-attorney, um, just because it. Well, attorneys are very, very good at giving you the art of the possible. Us that are a little more simple thinking, we, we, we don't think about it, so it gets done quicker. Doesn't mean it's better, it just means it gets done quicker.
I rely very heavily on Hector. I'm happy to have those conversations, but everything will go. Through him at some point.
Yeah, of course.
The other thing that I do want uh encourage you, I should say, to start thinking about is. Um, we also had um rather lengthy discussions about um. The service that would presumably be provided to your building. Now, your current well operates between sixty and eighty gallons per minute is my understanding. Um, I believe you have a roughly six thousand gallon holding tank, you chlorinate it, you run it through a softener system. You run it to that and then into the RO, is that correct?
Oh, the RO, the RO tank generates um all the water that's stored in the storage tank.
Okay, so that goes back to the, to the big six thousand gallon, alright. And then from there it goes into your uh mixing, okay? So anyway, um, if there's a. If there's an understanding that you wanna grow this thing, what you probably need to start thinking about from a, from a monetary standpoint. Is what size of a connection you're going to want. Okay? So, um, because this would presumably be a different connection with a larger meter. That's gonna dictate your maximum flow. Um, now you've already paid one RCA fee or meter fee, if you will. That's just for the, like a standard residential equivalent fee that um for the meter that you have right now. But that meter uh doesn't even provide the, the, the seventy gallons per minute that you're roughly operating at right now. That would be, require a one inch meter. That's two RCA fees. And they're running about eighty-six hundred dollars per RCA fee right now. So if you think that seventy's gonna get you by, and I'm guessing it's not, you're probably gonna wanna build in more capacity than that. I would, but again, I'm just a sign guy. Um, a one and a half inch uh gets you up to two hundred gallons per minute roughly. That's probably gonna hold you over for quite some time.
If we run out of that, that would be a good problem.
Now, the downside to that is, is that's a factor of eight. So you would be on the hook for about seven RCA fees. If you subtract out the one you've already paid. So you're looking at like fifty grand, fifty, sixty grand for that connection. Plus the meter and.
Yep.
Associated stuff, plumbing costs, whatever. So I just wanna put that out there, cause it's not a small number.
Yep.
So.
No, we.
Give that some thought.
And you're not just a sign guy, you know a lot more about water than I do.
Well.
But no, we, we, and, and I would say that um, you, you're right, like, we would build this, of course. We believe we're gonna scale it significantly and um, if. Uh, that number would not be prohibitive for us. And we, we conviction around what we're doing, you know, like, again, great problem to have, so, so.
Yeah, and it's, it's a cost you get to amortize out over a number of years, many, 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 many years. You could probably put that on a twenty-year amortization or something.
So, so Hector, how do you want this handled? You want the planning commission to recommend to the board? Or should the planning commission just table it?
Yeah.
Or should we just recommend, you know, as it sits and let the board table it?
Uh, at the present time, there are too many unknowns. I recommend that the planning commission table this matter, that the board table this matter. Pending uh submission by the applicant. Uh, and that pointed out to the applicant's attorney and even sent her the statute. The burden of proof, the burden of going forward is on the applicant to demonstrate a case. Rather than just reciting personal opinions, no offense intended, but. That's what the law requires for a conditional use permit. And that was changed in Wisconsin recently, so to speak, in twenty seventeen. So I think that uh you should uh adjourn the public hearing. Uh, to another date also, so as to allow the applicant to submit more. Information, evidence for the consideration of the board. And in the meantime, I would hope that their attorney would redline the document, send it to me. And send me the other documents that I've been asking for, so that uh I can reassure the board. That I have verified what has been represented. Again, no uh. No disrespect intended, but that's my role as the attorney to verify understandings that other people have.
Motion to table? Second. There we have a motion and a second from the planning commission to uh table item number eight now.
Yep.
So, any other discussion? Sounds like it. No? Mr. Grimm, you're good?
No, no.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Um, so the village board. Uh, discussion. There is none. Well.
Oh, we need to make a motion.
It's, it's on the agenda, so we've got to table it.
Yeah, so um I will make a motion as a village board representative to table the item.
I know. Second. Motion is second by the village board to uh table the discussion on the, on uh the conditional use permit for Kim Wright Co-Pac, Co-Pac LLC. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Motion carries. Now, what we did not uh. Do is, in the table is include any um. Adjournment or notion of a new public hearing, but we can still, we can still do that, right?
Your journey to another date to be determined.
Okay, alright, so we have a motion to adjourn the village board. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, let's have a drink.
Yeah.
Right?
We have to do eighty.
Liquor.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, item number.
I got it, Jerry.
I did.
Item number eleven.
Did you throw samples?
As reviewing.
How are you gonna guarantee the quality of this alcohol?
Ninety proof.
Alright, item eleven, discussion of possible action on plan of operation for AJ's Liquor, two zero three one six West Main Street, Suite one oh six, land in Wisconsin, five three oh four six. We do have the applicant here anxiously and patiently waiting to plead their case.
Anything to do with water?
Thank you for your patience, too.
Yeah, thank you.
No. No, no problem.
So I'll I'll just ask you to uh, introduce yourself, give us your spiel.
Alright, so my name's Justin Capusta. I'm here with my wife today, my daughter, Kailia here. Um, so, good evening, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. Um, we're excited to present our vision for opening a family-owned liquor store in the village of Lanning. Quick background on me, um, I live in the community. I've lived in Lanning for the past four years. I've worked in the community for the past twelve years. I'm actually a foreman for Lanning Stone Products. Um, but with a growing family and trying to succeed in other areas, I'm looking to open a family-run business. Um, as a husband and wife team, we are passionate about our serving our community and contributing to the local economy. Our goal is to pro- provide a well-managed, responsibly-operated establishment that offers quality products, supports local businesses. And enhances the retail options available to this, the community. Um, we're looking to provide a store that is for the whole community, but also upscale for what's coming to the community. That uh, don't wanna have a nice platform and offer a lot of different products. We understand the importance of business uh, aligned with the village values. We are committed to uh, ensuring a safe, passionate, and community-focused environment. I'm obviously better at uh, making big rocks and little rocks than uh, public speaking, but I'm here to give it a try.
Things practice. Do you have any background in the liquor store business?
Um, I'm not in the liquor store business. I got a family that's got background in uh, sales. And they're been a big help in this.
Sure.
What else are you putting into this liquor store besides the alcohol? Or what you might think you wanna do with there? I'm curious.
Yeah, so our our goal is to provide your standard option that everyone consumes, along with alcoholic, non-alcoholic. Any kind of supplies that go with a liquor store. But then also wanna cater towards like finer wines and allocated bourbons and store picks and barrel picks from other distributors and kinda. Make it a rustic oak barrel kinda look inside, just a nicer one, not like your average place. No, not not BP, no, no, we, we're definitely kinda going towards.
Different market.
Yeah, yeah, and this whole area is growing. I see all the subdivision going up and, I mean, I live right on Good Hope Road. There's so much going around us and me and the wife, she's been a stay-at-home mom, thankfully taken care of our daughter. We're kinda like, what can we do in this area with the real estate that's available?
Yeah.
That was one of the things that came to mind and kinda went gung-ho on it.
Do you intend to sell tobacco products as well?
It's a good one.
Um, not to start, we're kinda looking at just liquor right now.
About like head shop type stuff?
No, that's not really what we're going for, more just uh, classier liquor.
Beverages, strictly.
Yeah, yep.
And not ninety-nine cent bottles, please.
No.
Yeah, fifty cent.
No. You know, that's not quite the route we were looking to go. We do wanna keep it nice and classy and up upscale for what we see the future of this community become.
BP.
Well, when I told my husband about your idea, he slapped his head and said, that's a great idea. This area could use a liquor store. That's what he said. He's also been sober for seventeen years. He requests you have a nice selection of non-alcoholic beers, and we promise legal. He drinks a lot of non-alcoholic beer. It's really a waste of money.
We definitely wanna cater to everybody, you know, to a lot of the community, so that that is definitely a thing we'll have.
And no fireworks.
And no fireworks.
No fireworks.
Uh, did anybody else have any other questions for?
Mike must have something.
Yeah, Mike. What did we miss?
This is an existing office in that space, right?
Yeah, yep, yep. We're not changing the layout of the building. It's just more shelves and.
That would be my only possible comment is there's, I mean, it's diagrammed out, but it's not really, I mean, typically, we like to see some measurements on the walls, but. At least, yeah. The landlord, the slumlord.
Yeah, he's with me here, so.
We keep an eye on him.
All 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 you gotta do is 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 sometime when that, that landlord, when he does these little square boxes, and he just counts the ceiling tiles. He pretty much figure out the size of these places real quickly for us, so you can say it's, it's, you know, eighteen by forty.
Yeah, I definitely should have included that.
They're either two by two or two by four.
Yeah, that's pretty easy, I mean.
All he knows is it's well lit.
I mean, especially.
You're the landlord. It won't be that correct.
Especially when the landlords have to figure out where to put that light for.
Well, it sounds like the planning commission is um, is okay with approving, or making a motion to approve of the plan of operation for AJ's Liquor. Located at two oh three one six West Main Street, Suite one oh six.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Guns and liquor, over.
Yep.
We wish you luck.
I appreciate it.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries to approve the plan of operation, item number twelve, discussion and possible action on sign permit application for AJ's Liquor, two zero three one six West Main Street, Suite one oh six. Land in Wisconsin, five three zero four six, and I will be recusing myself from this item.
You make it. I I would guess I would have to too then, right, Patrick? Maybe?
What about the monument sign? I didn't hear.
Was that in there?
Are you gonna put something on the monument?
No, I did not include that, but it, we would have a sign on the monument, too.
It would just be replacing pink flamingo, I think, right?
Yeah.
So it would be the same size, shade.
Color.
Yeah, I think we could probably.
You think you could find a sign guy that could give us a little bit more information? I mean, this is pretty bright. I mean, wood lights are black.
I can't answer that question for you, cause I did recuse myself, but um. Yeah, so this one, let's see.
Have you decided which uh, sign option you'd like to do?
So the black would be typically, uh, it would be opaque. And then it would just, the the part that the light would shine through would be the white, the AJ's and the orange liquor bottle.
Yeah.
So it would be LED illuminated.
Yeah, and does this meet the sign orders as far as sign, size goes for that?
It matches the size of the sign that's currently there.
I mean.
So I'm assuming so. But it wasn't researched by.
It's it's not leveling the drawing here.
It's it's a little off on there.
Well, it'll look good. Believe it or not, I did not do.
Make a motion to approve the sign application for AJ Liquor.
I did, exactly.
Do they have a first and a second?
We have a motion and a second, yeah. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And uh.
Motion adjourned.
Recuse my.
Second.
Third. Motion and seconded, any further discussion?
Wait, who seconded?
Who seconded the adjournment?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. O'Donnell.
You're not a punishment.
I'll second.
I also am. Uh, Mr. Grimm. Alright, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Right, any opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned.
You, thank you guys, I appreciate it.
We're pretty good on the two.